Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. I'd like to call the 6:45 PM public hearing to order in regards to 12093 Sixth Avenue, unsecure safe building. Mr. Eucauter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a presentation made, but I just thought I would provide the resolution related to this case, which has to do with 12093 Sixth Avenue before Snyder, the Stuckees who own the parcel with the house. There's two parcels associated with this property, one that has a house on it, the other which the Stuckees do not own, has a garage on it, and that would be a separate parcel. At the last meeting, the Stuckees requested a public hearing. At that public hearing, the township requested that the property be secured for safety. You know, a silt fence was installed with the fences falling. The past couple of days, I've just requested some information from the Stuckees on, you know, how they might secure the fence in the short term and haven't heard back. But, you know, with that, I thought we could discuss maybe the short-term securing of the property at this meeting. With that, you know, we do have a demolition bid, a low bid of $14,000, to take down the house and the garage. You know, obviously, if the Stuckees were to take down the house, you know, that bid would probably be split out in some fashion. And so this, this public hearing is, you know, a result of, you know, or a requirement of the resolution that if the property owners requested a hearing, we could have one, you know, to discuss the matter. So with that, I think that the house is certainly in bad shape. It's probably been well overdue. I was talking to a gentleman that lives in the neighborhood, and it's been an issue for years. So it's, it's, you know, time, I think, to remediate this safety issue.
Very good. And I believe the Stuckees are here this evening. Do you have anything else, Mr. Eucauter?
That's all I have.
Okay. Was there a presentation, or would you like to address the board?
Yeah, let's address the board.
I'll swear the bid.
Okay.
For anybody who's going to give a presentation at the hearing, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah.
And if you could also, when you reach the podium, if you could please, again, state your name for the record as well as your address, please. Thank you.
Regina Stuckey, 6826 Park Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45236. One, we were trying to, you know, need to know what, you know, the purpose of the meeting, of course. But one thing we wanted to point out, just in passing, and our attorney was coming, he couldn't make it, got a kind of a conflict for today, but nonetheless, he stated that, you know, on the resolution, you've got the two parcels. And we understand, you know, parcel one is the, the structure, the house, and parcel two, of course, would probably be the garage. But nonetheless, the resolution, and, you know, we're only looking at the house, so I don't know if this, our attorney just kept stating that you probably should just have a resolution. If you're dealing with the property that Cincinnati Choice Properties, which is our official company name, then it's really the parcel number of the first one, which is the first structure, which is the 600-11-1526. And that should only be the only thing on the, on the resolution. That's what he kept stating, that we should make sure we take care of that.
Okay.
And the other question that we do have is regarding notification of the other owner, which is the previous, original owner, we just, we just bought of the garage, because we just purchased the property in '21, so. And so the previous owner, were they notified, or have they been notified via, you know, certified mail or any type of notification about the garage that needs to be also torn down?
They have. The, the lien holder and property owner, the state of the property owner has been sent certified mail and regular mail.
Okay.
The, as the resolution requires, both properties, as is the Kukula Mill property, which was a separate resolution from that night, a notice was put in the paper, the Cincinnati Inquirer, related to that. The statute also does not require that it be posted on the building, and I think that it has been, or at least at the threshold of the property. So certainly, notice has occurred for, for both properties.
Okay, okay. Okay. And then the, the question concerning the securitization of the property, when we were at the last meeting, was that last week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, okay. We had said we would definitely put something, or fencing around the property, and we did put a fence, fencing around the property. Since then, we have heard back from Mr. Eucauter stating, you know, why isn't it a chain link fence? I did email him, did you get my email?
I did. I thought we could address it tonight.
Okay.
You know, at the, the posture of the township thus far has been one of, you know, wanting to work, work with you guys. You know, related to the fencing, the, you know, the mesh, or the silt fencing, you know, someone could step over and walk, you know, walk over. So I think it's a matter of safety. You know, the silt fencing, you know, even if it were standing, wouldn't secure it so, you know, like a kid or a teenager or someone could still get into the, to the sites. I think when the, when that matter was discussed at the last meeting, the, kind of the, the goal of it was to secure the, the house so that, you know, one wouldn't just be able to walk into the property related to that.
Okay. Okay. The only reason I'm bringing it up, because we felt, we felt we were doing a good job in terms of putting the fencing around, and then Mr. Eucauter mentioned something to the effect since then about chain link fence, and that's what I asked him in the email this morning, was there's something in the zoning regulations that state that in terms of dealing with securitization of a, of a housing or a structure, that states it has to be a chain link fence? Because we thought we were, you know, providing adequate, doing the necessary one thing one would need to do to say, hey, don't walk on our property, we've got a no passing, no trespassing sign on the property also.
The zoning, and I would yield to the trustees on their judgment about the property, but the zoning resolution does allow for the township to move forward with the demolition of the property if it were in a condition that posed imminent threat of safety.
Okay.
It's subjective, but you maybe could see that in this, in this case. I would leave it to the, you know, the trustees, but I think just the concern, the safety and the, you know, the threat to the community.
Okay. Well, let me just kind of add to that. We do have another bid, a bid lower than $10,000. We're looking to move on this pretty soon, but the thought process is now we're going to spend $1,000 to put around the building, when hopefully in the next, what do you think?
Four weeks.
Three weeks, three to four weeks, we're going to knock it down. So to put $1,000 out, and then, oh, by the way, we're going to knock it down, it just, you know, that wasn't just working. And that's our back thought, which we had not shared with you, of course. But, so we thought we were doing adequate with the fencing that we put there. Meanwhile, as soon as we get all of our other questions answered, such as what to do with the culvert, in terms of what is the township's requirements, or, or, you know, the needs as it relates to that culvert there, because we don't have a, that's what our demo people are asking us.
Is this the pipeline underneath, the pipe underneath the driveway?
Yes.
No.
No, no, it's the.
No, it's, it's on the patio, there's a patio in front of the actual property where, what's that?
Could you just, as we get going, if you wouldn't mind?
Jerry Stuckey, 6750 L. Drive. Sorry, is that what you need me to?
Yes, yes, yeah, I was just going to say your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Okay. And then I would address your questions to the board, and then if, if we can kind of go from there, if it's a maintenance matter.
Okay. So the question, the question we had was, there's a culvert in front of the actual house, and we, they're, they're asking, the demolition companies are asking us, what should we do with that? So they're asking planning and zoning, what do you want us to do with that, to properly secure that at all, once it's demoed?
So is this outside the, the cistern that's on the property and the connection to the sewer? This is something underneath the front stoop?
It's, it's, if you're in the front of the, I don't know if you can't zoom in, but where that first post is to the right, there's, there's a culvert, there's like a well right in front of that, on that concrete structure.
I think that's the cistern.
Cistern, cistern.
Okay, okay, okay. The, the bid that, the low bid that the township received noted that the contractor would remove that cistern and then fill it back in, you know, so the site will be filled in appropriately with dirt.
Okay.
You know, and packed down, so, you know, it won't lay the dirt, and then it settles. You know, the appropriate amount of dirt will be brought back in to remediate as part of that bid.
So, so let me ask you this, then. So you're just saying, if we don't go with that person, we use just dirt, regular dirt to work on it? Is that what you're saying on that?
I think generally, if you remove a cistern, you're going to have a hole in the ground, and then if you don't bring in an appropriate amount of dirt, it'll settle, and then you have a, you know, you have a pit in the ground.
Okay.
Type, that's kind of a.
Okay.
So that's the purpose, okay.
Okay, okay, so, all right. Was there any other questions?
No, that's what we needed to, that was the question that the demo man, you know, asked us today. So that's why I was asking that question this morning on the email.
I think that's it. I guess you were going to ask us questions about fencing or the property itself, or is that?
Do we have a picture of the fencing? Is this, is this the fencing?
So it's a rainstorm.
The rain, yeah, knocked it down. It's about what, three feet?
It's three feet high.
Can people enter the building, though? If you push on the door, do you get in, or is it open?
So it's, to answer your question, it's not open in the front, but it's open in the rear of the house.
The rear doesn't even have.
There's not a, there's not a rear wall?
There's no siding, I think you can walk right in. If we could secure this construction fencing, like an orange construction demo fencing, that would not cost nearly that much money, but would secure it, because it would be four foot high, and it would be tied off.
So basically, signed posts in, in the, yeah, I mean.
The yellow construction, the orange construction.
Orange construction fence, yeah.
Floppy stuff that you just unroll and put around, yeah.
Right.
Because you wouldn't have to go all the way around the yards, as long as the house was here.
Right.
Okay.
So it comes in a four, I think it comes four foot.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I know what you're saying. It has the holes in it, it's kind of rolling out.
Exactly.
Similar to what we did here with the silt fencing, but it was just black, and it maybe was high enough.
It should be.
Probably some sturdy metal stakes.
Okay.
Okay, okay. The intent is, is safety, is, that's, that's really what it is.
Understood.
It's not so much, you know, dirt runoff or washout that a silt fence would be, would be very appropriate for, but I think the concern here, I think we've got some photos up now that kind of show the open nature of that back, the back of that building, that that, it's, it's the safety issue that I think everyone is.
Right. Deny access to children, basically, and anyone else who might stumble in there.
Okay.
Oh, ask the question, just to ask the question, yeah.
Just, just, just a question. There was a fire on the property on Fifth Avenue, just behind us, and just out of curiosity, there's no fencing on that property at all. And it's, it appears to be, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not the fire marshal, but it appears to be somewhat of unsafe area also. It's, it's really strange. You can't really find a number. It's like 12020 Fifth Avenue, but it sits at the corner of Cincinnati and Fifth Avenue. And the guy who used to live there, I guess he pitched a tent in the backyard. So, so you've got the, the structure, and I showed you the picture of it, it's burnt out, and there's nothing around it, so maybe, I don't want to be a tattletale, but I'm just in FYI, I don't know if anybody was aware of that or not, but there's no fencing around that at all.
It, it was very recent, and I believe, in fact, that, you know, there may be a resident here in the audience that may have some concern about that. That's one that will be put on our radar, and we will proceed with, you know, appropriately remediate in that property.
So, did you say the owner is living in a tent in the yard now? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, yeah, in the backyard, you can, yeah. Or maybe he's camping out.
Or maybe it's just there, and they're playing.
Right, right.
Who knows? And one other, one other question, real quick, and I guess that's, one other, one other parcel, other place, 12, I can't reach it.
Zero.
12062 First Street. There's another new house built there, and there was no tent or anything on there, no tent, no fencing or anything to that nature also. We just had questions about that one also. I don't know if you're aware of that one also.
What, any construction?
I'm not, but I'm happy to go take a look at it.
Okay, just as an aside.
Thank you for bringing those up.
Oh, no, no problem. Next steps, or where?
So you, you have demo scheduled in three weeks? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Well, we have to get the permits, so that's the problem. We have to go through the permits, but the, the demolition contractor was asking questions about the cistern.
Cistern.
In the front, in the front. So that's kind of what kind of stopped us right now to get, to get, to make sure its bid was correct.
Okay. The bid, did that include the taking the cistern out?
He had more questions about it, so he didn't make, he made a separate bid saying not to do it, and then now he's going to make another bid.
To fill it in, or how he's going to fill it in. And so in the interim, so to close off, when are we going to take care of the, the orange fencing?
This weekend, so this weekend, I guess.
Give us to this weekend, we'll, we'll get this four, five foot, and we'll, we'll cover the rear of the, of the structure.
So you really got to cover all the way around it to ensure that nobody can get in?
Okay, let me ask you one other question, since we're here. If you can pull that picture back up, if you can. As you know, the, the parcel doesn't have, we're not only, we're only entitled to the parcel with the actual house that sits on.
That's correct.
So do we just do our house and, and leave it at that? I mean, that's kind of, it sounds like.
Yes.
That's your obligation.
Yeah.
You would be trespassing on the other property unless you have permission to be there, so you're not responsible for it.
I'm going for, Section 7 of the resolution requires that, for ORC 505.863, the Board Proceeds of Sycamore Township shall make an order deciding the matter, not later than 30 days after said hearing. The order may dismiss the matter, this is after the public hearing, may dismiss the matter, or direct the removal, repair, or securance of the building or other structure at any time a party and interest make consent to any such order. So I think from here, the, perhaps the board would have to come to some sort of decision or, or have some discussion on kind of how to proceed, you know, whether to give them a reasonable amount of time going forward, or, you know, but at some point, if, if the building wasn't down, or if there wasn't a plan, you know, the township would have to act and basically communicate a plan, and it would have to be provided in an order, like I said, not later than 30 days after said hearing, so it'll be.
If we waited until our next meeting to take action on that and have a further report as to what's going on with an actual contractor who then is booked to take it down, and you can report on what's happened, I think that's still within the window, and it would let us make a decision, and hopefully, everything will be in motion then, and we can approve the plan they have with a contingency, perhaps, that if that doesn't happen within some period of time, we then act. Would that be appropriate?
I would yield to the law director on that.
Yeah.
So would the order be that, basically, our correspondence be that we will, as a result of this hearing, that we will, we will basically wait till the next meeting to reconvene to understand what the, their solution is to remediate the property, is that?
That's my suggestion.
So the board's just not making an order tonight?
Correct.
Because you can have this public hearing and make an order within 30 days.
Right.
The board will just take no action at this meeting.
Sounds good.
And are you minimal to, to coming back in two weeks and, and providing us an update, you know, perhaps a, you know, a scheduled demolition date and, and what have you? Are you available two weeks from, two weeks from today?
I think that's, that's the issue of our traveling schedule.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure that that's workable.
Right, well, or could they provide a comprehensive report, on the other hand, to Mr. Eucauter, or some assurance in that form, and that would, if you're able to provide a report, that may be sufficient also.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be fine.
So the 17th, yes. A report and/or physically, I'm coming back for a minute.
That's a good question. The township, it's probably, I guess in a week, I don't know, a range of a week or two. Tracy, do you know, in terms of a demolition, what it might take to get through the building department?
It all depends, it varies.
So, I mean, that could get in the way of this as well.
Yeah, it could get in the way, it'd be two weeks, it could be a month.
Right. I will just say, with the remediation of the property, we, as part of the bid, bids that the township has received, the cistern and, you know, has been removed, dirt, and then, you know, a top dressing would be applied, and then, and then also, the, the bid would also require the street to be made clear.
Yeah, I think, did the bid include utility, utilities have to be removed, the sewer has to be removed and capped off.
I have to verify that, with the, with the bid.
But you're saying those are the requirements?
Yeah, utilities, yes.
And it's, and it's a street clear?
Street clearance, okay.
Ensuring that the street is clean after the, after the event.
Clean, yeah, clean after, yeah, with the dirt and so forth, right. Okay. Okay, we can at least get those points out to the, to our contractors. And report and/or physical meeting in two weeks. That's right, and we would report back to Jeff, let Jeff know the status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on, as it relates to the public hearing regarding this particular property?
That is all I have.
All right, well, then with that, at 7:06, I will close, I will, do I need to motion to close a public hearing? Yeah, I need to motion to close a public hearing. Just close it, just close it. All right, it is 7:06 PM. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will reconvene our regular trustee meeting at 10 after 7:00. meeting at 10 after 7. I'd like to call our regular trustee meeting to order. If everyone could please rise for the invocation given this evening by Mr. Calhoun.
Heavenly Father, we humbly ask for your guidance and direction this evening. We ask that you give us wisdom concerning all the matters before us. We ask for your blessings on our families and all the families that we represent. Continue to make Sycamore Township a community of beauty, faith, prosperity, harmony, and love. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dieters would note that all three trustees are present. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September 19, 2023 zoning public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Wegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
And looking for a motion to approve the September 19, 2023 trustee meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
And second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dieters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Wegman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda, Hamilton County Commissioner Denise Treehouse. Commissioner, you are a well-known individual, but if you wouldn't mind stating for the record your name and address for the board, please.
I am Denise Treehouse. I'm a Hamilton County Commissioner. I live at 433 Old Macmillan, 45219.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. I haven't been here in a while. I did this in 2017, as some of you might recall, way back when, and visited all 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County. I tried to do it in 49 days. It did not work out. That was impossible, come to find out. I did it in like 49 weeks. So anyway, I did it. So, and the idea was to just go and make sure that, you know, Hamilton County shows up as a partner to all the local jurisdictions throughout the county and that you understand and have some opportunity to look at what some of the opportunities are to partner with the county. And so back then, I created my menu of opportunity, which you have in front of you. It's been updated because we've expanded those opportunities, I'm grateful to say. So I just, I just wanted you to have it as a point of reference. All three county commissioners are listening on the back. In case you need anything, feel free to call one of my colleagues if it's hard, myself at the TZ, I'd be happy to help. So I just wanted to give a brief update on what's going on at the county. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. And so we, interestingly, are in the middle of the budget process right now at the county. We start early so that we can get all the department heads in to talk about their requests by way of the budget. The bad news is, the requests are about $40 million over the amount of revenue we have available. So, we always have a gap. This is a pretty big gap, a little bit bigger than usual. I think last year it was 13 million or so. So we've got a little bit of work to do, but the good news is that all the departments are coming in and so we get a better understanding, if they've asked for an increase, and many of them are asking for an increase, what is that about? What is the rationale? So that we can make some educated decisions about closing the $30 million gap. I will tell you, the treasurer actually came in and said, no request for additional funding, which was my favorite part of the hearing today. But that's unusual. But, but you know what's happening is that we are all trying to level set with salaries. And you know this as well as anybody, we're all trying to recruit and retain good people to work for our organizations. The county is no different. The county commission did a competitive wage study about a year ago because we were not gaining people and we were also losing people because we just weren't paying people and we weren't giving raises for many years in a row. And so we did a competitive wage study, come to find out, some people were on track and right in the middle of the range, others were not. And so we had made an adjustment. Everybody is now in range to dignify the work and thank them for the work they're doing for the county. That's good news for the citizens because they get better service, because people stay longer and there's some continuity in the organization. But think about some of the folks we're talking about that work for the county, people that answer that 911 call, the sheriff deputies, the JFS workers that are doing the child protective services work in people's homes. These are really important jobs. And so we need to pay people adequately or we lose them to Warring County. I mean, so, we did the study, the house is in order. We're also doing parental leave policy in Hamilton County, eight weeks of parental leave, free paid leave for folks that are either having kids or adopting kids. And then we've got a tuition reimbursement program. So as you can see, we're targeting especially young people to enter the organization and stay with us for a while. So that's the good news. Things are pretty much in order and until the budget hearings started and we realized we had a $30 million gap in the request, we were feeling pretty good about things. So anyway, we've got a little ways to go on that, but we'll make it up. We always do. I'll talk about partnerships in a minute, but I just, some of you are involved in some of the things that we are doing. So I wanted to give a quick update related to the Heroin Coalition, which is now called the Addiction Response Coalition. As you may know, we're, I mean, fentanyl is all over the community. It's all over the country. It's, it's causing overdose deaths in every community throughout the nation. And so we realized this trend a few years ago. We've got a coalition, as you may know, with prevention, treatment, public health, and law enforcement also sitting at the table together. We pulled in the faith community, the business community, and the hospitals to have a conversation every month where we are trying to figure out what's going on in the community and how we can address it and save lives and get people into treatment in Hamilton County. That's basically what we're trying to do. And so for the first time since this organization was stood up, which was back in 2015, before I got to the commission, Greg Hartman initiated this with some of the founding members were Neil Tillow with Talbot House, Tom Signin, Chief of Police in Newtown. Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition was formed. And so since then, for the first time, we've had a decrease in the number of overdose deaths in Hamilton County by about 100. That's significant. Now, we're still losing hundreds of people in Hamilton County, about 300 to 400 people every year, which is way too many. But to see a trajectory that's moving down now is gratifying, but also you have to ask yourself the question, why? What is happening? And is it a result of the work we're doing? Some, but the work that the community is doing, the way this community has started to talk about addiction, trying to reduce the stigma and get people into treatment and long-term recovery, it's making a difference in this community. I'll give you an example of how the state and the county have partnered in this conversation. A number of years ago, we went to the state and said, we want to treat people in the Justice Center that are suffering from either mental health or addiction issues. We want to treat them so that when they get out, they've got the support they need to succeed and not come back. We do not want the revolving door in Hamilton County because somebody has an issue with mental health or addiction. And so we have stood up with the help of the state legislature, 90 treatment beds in the Justice Center. At the time, we started to initiate this, we had an overcrowding problem as well, so it was kind of killing two birds with one stone. So 90 extra beds, they're all for treatment. We've bifurcated the two different populations and we are opening that part of the Justice Center within the next couple of months. That is a different approach to law enforcement in this community. From my vantage point, it is the right approach and is also a smart approach and a cost-effective approach because these folks, if given the supports, hopefully will not reoffend and come back in relative to the issues that they offended for in the first place. So anyway, just to, it gives you a sense of where we're heading in Hamilton County. And I've seen preliminary numbers for this year. I'm trying not to jinx anything, but we are seeing the trend continue so far. Subject, we could have one bad day and all bets are off, right? That's the nature of addiction. But, and Tracy, you're, you're part of this, we are trying really hard to utilize the dollars we're getting from One Ohio, from the settlement, and from some grant funding that we get from the federal government to try to address the needs in the community. So I just want to, I don't usually go on that far with one thing, but I think it's important to some of you and I just wanted to highlight it.
It is, and I will tell you just to emphasize your point, Denise, serving on that One Ohio Board, it has been incredibly educational, incredibly rewarding to see the different constituencies throughout Hamilton County that have really come together to try and address this, this massive community issue. And to Denise's point, you know, one bad day can, you know, one influx of new product can, can change that math overnight, but there are a lot of tremendously committed people and this county has not wasted any opportunity or any resource to try and make a difference in that area for, for all of us.
And I count you as, I count you as one of the dedicated people.
Denise serves as the liaison to the state as well, so she is up in Columbus.
Just beating my head against a wall, honestly. No, we haven't even seen the funding yet. It's been, we, we, the settlement came a long time ago.
Oh, a while ago, yeah.
Anyway, we're trying to work that out.
We're not with the state, let's put it that way.
Yeah, not, not to, well, I'm trying not to, but anyway, that's, that's the case. So you can see there are other, other things on here, but let me focus on opportunities because you all, in your township, have taken advantage of some of the partnerships that the county has had to offer. So just over the last few years, you have taken advantage in every year since '21, '22, and '23, the residential recycling initiative program, you've gotten some money from that. You also have gotten CDBG dollars for planning and development. It's about over $100,000 for that purpose in 2021. And then most recently, in 2023, you got a small event grant for $20,000. I don't know what that was used for, you do.
Our festival.
Your festival. So you can see that, and that wasn't around in '17, neither was the Community Revitalization Grant, which is not on the list, but I would encourage you to continue to look at that and apply if you've got a project that will catalyze something by way of economic development in your community. But the point here is that while we are offering these opportunities, they only work when you take advantage of them. They only work when you apply. And so kudos to your administration for knowing what's out there and what's being offered by the county, applying for it and building this community through some of the partnership and some of the leverage with these dollars. So that's all I have on my list. There are other things going on, some big stuff with the Bengals negotiation, which has started. We've got some, a big project down in the Convention Center District with a new hotel coming in, Convention Center's being redone, we've got that great green space over to the east side. We're renovating that whole district with the city of Cincinnati and with other partners. So we're very excited about that. We just got the Finley Market Garage. Who, does anybody go to Finley Market? Thank you. So that is due to open in November. Retail on the bottom, parking on the top. There's a lot of development going on down there, both residential and commercial. And so again, trying to do something, provide parking in a way that makes sense for that community. Also, FC will be utilizing that parking garage during game days. So just, you know, it's a, it's a unique approach, I think, from us, but I'm really excited about some of the stuff that's coming online here within the next couple of months. So thanks for your time. I've got nothing else. Happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thanks for coming, man.
We appreciate you coming out and, and thanks for all you do down at the county and thanks for being a good partner.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Valued partner. Thank you.
Good luck Thursday.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Sheriff's Patrol Report. Oh, I'm sorry, I totally skipped over, sorry, 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 sorry. Totally skipped over public comments. Public comments, they even have my list here. Looks like this evening, we have two people signed up to speak. The first individual is Sophia Holly. And I'm going to let, do we need to swear folks in? No, no, we don't. Okay, not for public comment. Okay, Sophia, if you would do us a favor and just for the record, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sophia Holly. I'm an attorney at KMK Law, and I'm here regarding the resolution, the first resolution that's on the list. If you'd like me to speak at this point sequentially, I'm happy to do so. And my address is 1 East 4th Street, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202.
Any preferences from, from the board as far as, do we want to address this topic now or do we want to address it in context with?
I think, I think we're already past it.
Okay. Then let's just go ahead and take advantage of the public comment session, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I have been in communication with Mr. U. Carter for several months now. I've not been involved on this property as much as some of you I know, but I have been heavily involved and the property owner is really wanting to work and move forward and we appreciate all of the time and energy that went into the public hearing that was at the last session. The purpose for me being here today is to request that there be some modifications to the draft resolution that was provided to me by Mr. U. Carter. After attending the hearing, there are a few things in the resolution that I believe are additions that don't match what is being done here for the property and/or perhaps could be modified to reflect the decision that was made in the public hearing by the trustees. I provided a letter to Mr. U. Carter today and I believe he's provided it to you. So I can go through it briefly if that's helpful to sort of lay out hive points. Would that be helpful for you all? Okay, thank you.
It's your form.
Thank you very much. So first of all, with respect to the draft resolution for Section 4 and Section 5, there's some language that looks like it's something like boilerplate language. Section 4 references a building permit for construction and Section 5 lays out requirements for development review. It's skimming over that language, you might think, oh, well, this doesn't necessarily matter to the extent that it's inapplicable to the property, but it does suggest or indicate that there's an obligation for review to be done by the Hamilton County Engineer, the Hamilton County Director of Public Works, a summary report from a registered landscape architect. I believe that, it's my suspicion that for PUD modifications or for PUD approvals, Sycamore Township includes that language typically for new builds. And so that language was included sort of just as a standard language, but to the extent to which it imposes an obligation on the property owner to go through various approval channels, I would respectfully request that that be stricken from the resolution so that the property owner doesn't have to go through these channels that I don't believe are necessary here and also weren't addressed. So I think that might have just been an inadvertent inclusion or rather one that isn't applicable here. And I believe I've said this already, but these aren't things that were discussed at the hearing. So I don't think that these are necessarily things that even the trustees have an interest in advocating. I would also similarly request for Section 4, the reference to a building permit be stricken as inapplicable. For Section 6, we discussed this briefly, or rather, you discussed it, I was in the audience. The question, there are questions relating to property maintenance and I recall that there was commentary that there are concerns about property maintenance and that those are sort of a separate, separate avenue that the township will follow up on, but to the extent to which they don't relate to zoning. In this letter, I believe that some of the references in Section 6 suggests that there are zoning restrictions on property improvements, perhaps a sentence stating that the, within the power of the zoning, within the zoning powers, these items will be attended to could help to avoid a suggestion that there's a zoning right to do property maintenance things. And as part of this PUD application, there, we've proposed a lot of changes to the property and we do intend to move forward on that. I've seen some facial expressions. If anyone has any questions, would like to interrupt me?
Just, just to address that.
Sure.
I think I just made the point in the last hearing that our hearing was a PUD hearing, it was not a property maintenance hearing. And in the process of the PUD hearing, we uncovered significant numbers of property maintenance issues that we had problems with. So we were really hearing that, we were hearing the PUD portion of it, that, that case, but we really didn't, I know that Jeff was going to follow up with you on the property maintenance portion to ensure that we got that addressed as well. So that, you said there was a reference and I just wanted to clarify that reference from the previous meeting.
Thank you. And the property, it needs to be maintained, so we understand that there's maintenance obligations. We just want to make sure that the resolution that's going to be the, the new zoning restriction on this property just reflects what's done within the zoning code, that the restrictions within the zoning code are those that are applicable to the property. Thank you for that clarification. On one point that I spoke about with Mr. U. Carter, and I believe that perhaps, this was at the very end of the hearing and I recall it was somewhat late, there was some discussion about the masonry enclosure around the cardboard. And at the end of the hearing, the representative for the property owner indicated that there were potentially some safety considerations with respect to either putting in masonry or with it being an enclosure. And there were some discussions as to whether a wall would be more appropriate. Those are my recollections specifically. And it appeared at that, at the hearing that we were unable to determine whether, what sort of, what sort of compromise, what sort of configuration would satisfy the zoning code and also protect the interests of the public safety and maybe even some fire code requirements. And I recall that Mr. Barbieri as counsel indicated that it was hints in belief that a minor adjustment to the PUD could be appropriate.
I think the intent there was, we all felt very comfortable with, it needs to be a masonry enclosure. And that if for some reason, that was just absolutely impossible, he said it was something that could be addressed administratively, that you would not have to come back through the zoning process. I think this group felt very comfortable that it, we were going to require a masonry enclosure for all dumpsters, including the one that you are referencing, but for, rather than that we were not able to sit there and resolve it that evening.
Sure.
That if for some reason, fire or whatever other reason down the road, it was determined to be absolutely impossible to do that, that that could be resolved administratively and would not have to come back through a zoning process. So I don't, I, I think the language that it's a masonry enclosure is fine.
Okay. And I appreciate that. And I suppose then, if it would be possible to, to incorporate or reference that this would be a minor adjustment to the PUD, that would be appreciated or we can deal with that when it comes, comes down the road.
We made a specific point of making a point of that in the record. Is that reflected in the minutes? I don't recall if it was.
It is reflected in the minutes and it would be reflected in these minutes, too.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Okay. A separate point, with respect to the odor mitigation system, Mr. U. Carter has indicated that he believes that the current mitigation system is adequate. He's indicated that and corresponds to me following the public hearing, to the extent to which the resolution could reference that, that would be appreciated or if the record could reflect it, that would be appreciated as well. There is a reference with respect to landscaping there, and there's specifically a, a date by which the landscaping must be completed. We're working with a landscape architect and in order to get landscaping plans before we put in the improvements, the date that's identified of November 2023 is, is not going to be adequate time for us to get a landscape architect and installation. I believe that if we want to get installation in by that deadline, we need to start in the next couple of weeks and that's not going to be sufficient time for us to secure a landscape architect. I would request that that be modified to include in a timely manner or something along those lines so that we can get the appropriate professionals in and have everything done accordingly.
Is there not already a landscape plan underway? I mean, I understand these discussions started back in the spring with our zoning people and that was one of the things raised back then. I'm surprised there's not one.
I believe it's actually part of the zoning presentation, was it not, Mr. U. Carter? And there's, that date was in that zoning document, along with the plan. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. I think there's been some initial plans created by the landscaper early on. There wasn't a formalized plan per se on the back area, there were some, some schematics, but this would be more of a comprehensive plan we're looking at.
It's my understanding that we, we've submitted quotes and that we've been working on a landscape planning and at the public hearing, I believe we came to, at least the property owners in agreement with the staff recommendations with respect to the type of trees and the location of trees, that that has not been reduced to a landscape architect plan. So for us to have a landscape architect plan to execute on, we'll need additional time to secure that. For the next item, Exhibit A, Paragraph 12, there was an area in the back of the building that's been identified as, as no parking, no customer entry zone. We're in agreement with that. We would just ask for there to be clarification with respect to certain parts of the, the area that's no customer entry, specifically next to the McAllister's Deli, there's some parking in the back. There was some language in the draft resolution. I've identified a proposed language that would make it a little bit more clear, just to make sure that people are still allowed to park in the area behind McAllisters.
Jeff, keep blowing up.
Related to this one, the, the photo of the no customer entry zone was included to essentially complement the.
And I recall that Mr. Barbieri, as counsel, indicated that it was hints in belief that a minor adjustment to the PUD could be appropriate.
I think the intent there was, we all felt very comfortable with, it needs to be a masonry enclosure, and that if for some reason that was just absolutely impossible, he said it was something that could be addressed administratively, that you would not have to come back through the zoning process. I think this group felt very comfortable that we were going to require a masonry enclosure for all dumpsters, including the one that you're referencing, but for, rather than that we were not able to sit there and resolve it that evening.
Sure.
That if for some reason, fire or whatever other reason down the road, it was determined to be absolutely impossible to do that, that that could be resolved administratively and would not have to come back through a zoning process. So I don't, I think the language that it's a masonry enclosure is fine.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and I suppose then, if it would be possible to incorporate or reference that this would be a minor adjustment to the PUD, that would be appreciated, or we can deal with that when it comes down the road.
We made a specific point of making a point of that in the record. Is that reflected in the minutes? I don't recall if it was.
It is reflected in the minutes, and it would be reflected in these minutes, too.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Okay. A separate point, with respect to the odor mitigation system, Mr. Ucotta has indicated that he believes that the current mitigation system is adequate. He's indicated that and corresponds to me following the public hearing. To the extent to which the resolution could reference that, that would be appreciated, or if the record could reflect it, that would be appreciated as well. There is a reference with respect to landscaping, and there's specifically a date by which the landscaping must be completed. We're working with a landscape architect, and in order to get landscaping plans before we put in the improvements, the date that's identified of November 2023 is not going to be adequate time for us to get a landscape architect and installation. I believe that if we want to get installation in by that deadline, we need to start in the next couple of weeks, and that's not going to be sufficient time for us to secure a landscape architect. I would request that that be modified to include in a timely manner or something along those lines, so that we can get the appropriate professionals in and have everything done accordingly.
Is there not already a landscape plan underway? I mean, I understand these discussions started back in the spring with our zoning people, and that was one of the things raised back then. I'm surprised there's not one.
I believe it's actually part of the zoning presentation, was it not, Mr. Ucotta? And that date was in that zoning document, along with the plan. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. I think there's been some initial plans created by the landscaper early on. There wasn't a formalized plan per se on the backyard. There were some schematics, but this would be more of a comprehensive plan we're looking at.
It's my understanding that we've submitted quotes and that we've been working on a landscape planning, and at the public hearing, I believe we came to, at least the property owners in agreement with the staff recommendations with respect to the type of trees and the location of trees, that that has not been reduced to a landscape architect plan. So for us to have a landscape architect plan to execute on, we'll need additional time to secure that. For the next item, Exhibit A, Paragraph 12, there was an area in the back of the building that's been identified as no parking, no customer entry zone. We're in agreement with that. We would just ask for there to be clarification with respect to certain parts of the area that's no customer entry, specifically next to the McAllisters' deli, there's some parking in the back. There was some language in the draft resolution. I've identified a proposed language that would make it a little bit more clear, just to make sure that people are still allowed to park in the area behind McAllisters'.
Jeff, keep looking up.
Related to this one, the photo of the no customer entry zone was included to essentially complement the conditioned text to put in pectoral form the zone, which clearly does not show the location of the McAllisters', which would be north of this zone up here.
So that's really what you're looking for anyway, right? You wanted McAllisters excluded, and they're not even in that zone, so.
My only concern would be, to the extent to which the language does not specifically cite to the area on the map, and if this is printed out or difficult to read in the future, I would just want there to be clarity.
What specifically references the rendering, it will exist in electronic form. If someone prints it black and white, it may be hard to see, but the township record will be color rendering.
I see what you're saying, and I just want to make sure that the property is as clear as possible, to the extent to which this is going to be something that is going to be affixed to the property going forward. And then the last two items with the Exhibit A, Paragraph 15, we would like there to be clarification that there's no masonry enclosure required for the dumpster that's located in the east access lane.
If I may, Madam Chair, in Condition 3A, it notes that the dumpster in the notch of the building by the east access lane in Box 4 is cited, and the trustee's effort report, this plan or this map shall remain. It was written that way in the original report, noting that the zoning commission recommended that it not be amended in any way, and essentially the board took up that recommendation and didn't change it.
Correct.
Correct.
So I don't think we need...
No.
From a zoning compliance plan standpoint, as part of the zoning compliance plan, which is the methodology to basically capture all of the conditions of this case and do a plan, certainly that is not going to be a condition that we require masonry there, which memorializes this case in a plan, so.
I will say, from looking at this from a lawyer perspective, though, I mean, it doesn't exclude a masonry requirement for that one either. Condition 3 says, in the middle of it, all dumpsters, blah, 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 require masonry dumpster enclosures, and then Part A of that says the dumpster shall remain. It doesn't say shall remain with no need for an enclosure. And then Condition, which one? 15 does seem to require that. Maybe we do need to clarify that?
Or is making a record of the meetings sufficient for that? I mean, it's...
I mean, it'll be hard to track that down.
Right.
Documents attached to the property, that's within your purview.
But I think that is a valid point here. You can read this document to require masonry still, because it does not create an exclusion for that. It just says that dumpster can stay there, it doesn't say...
So we're just going to add "without enclosure" to the end of that, A shall remain without enclosure?
Without masonry enclosure?
Yeah.
On the...
Do we need to reference the actual site plan, number four? Would that make it easier to cross, reference from the resolution back to the, I mean, because all it says is the east lane. I mean, that doesn't really, I mean, going forward, that could be anywhere.
It does note the in Box 4 is cited, and basically the plan to the right, so...
Right, no, I'm talking about in the resolution, though.
Oh.
In the resolution, if you read the resolution as it's...
It incorporates this, doesn't it?
It incorporates it.
Does it incorporate it?
Section 3, there it is.
So what comments that would you modify?
Well, as...
Would you modify the exhibit, or would you modify...
Well, the exhibit, we would modify either 3A or 15, just to reference back, with the exception of the dumpster in the notch of the building referenced in Condition 3A. I don't know which is less complicated, but...
I think the easiest way, or the least complicated way, would be to amend just 3A, because it's listed as an exception.
Yeah.
And we would just say shall remain, comma...
Notwithstanding anything else here, and perhaps, or not, I would say notwithstanding new Condition 37, then, which is cited at 15.
Or shall remain without further, you know, masonry...
No masonry enclosure required.
On the east elevation. Or remains as is in the existing condition, something to that effect.
You're probably, if you're going to change it, you better clarify that.
Be clear, yeah, qualify.
You really...
Because no one's going to remember what as is is three years from now.
Shall remain...
No masonry enclosure required.
Without masonry enclosure?
Yeah.
That's what they're looking for, and that's what we're trying to get to, so.
Not to get hypertechnical, but what if the dumpster breaks or wears out and they replace it? Should we specify anything as to that, equivalent size, whatever? We don't want something larger sticking out of there then.
If they put anything larger in there, they can't get traffic through there, probably. So I don't know that that's that big of a deal. I just, I think we're talking about enclosures only here, and I think if we exclude the enclosure, I think that it serves the purpose.
And that place where the truck pulls in is such that if it's pulled out further, that truck's not going to be able to fit to empty it?
Sorry. I see where you're going. Send chief penny after them then, anyway, because it would be a fire lane problem.
The last point that is raised in my letter that I'd like to address is the requirement that a lock be required for the garage. We would request that that be restricted to CrossFit being a tenant. It's possible that CrossFit won't be a tenant based upon the changes, and we would like that, the need and the justification for the lock, which is prohibiting people from going outside, would be removed to the extent to which that CrossFit tenant...
If you have a different tenant in there, why wouldn't we still want that access to be limited?
I believe in, I'm not a fire chief or anything like that, but to the extent to which you can leave things unlocked for safety reasons, it seems that would be a preference.
But you have a separate door to get, to access to get out there, anyway. So you don't really need that garage door for ingress and egress.
I think if you end up with a different tenant in there, you can request that of any new tenants, tenant zoning application or permit application.
That the lock...
Yeah, if you really think that a new tenant is not going to want a lock, then you can make that request as far as a new tenant permit application.
That that...
I think, I think, we all were pretty much in concert that that door needs to be locked, and I'm not looking to, personally, I'm not looking to modify that.
Yeah, same here. And we left in an exception that if deliveries are occurring, it can be opened for that, of course, but, yeah, it doesn't need to be open otherwise.
It also says that the lock shall be required on the rear garage door of the CrossFit studio, so it is specific to CrossFit.
Well, do we need to actually broaden that?
I don't think you need to change, I mean, I wouldn't change it.
Well, let's say, you know, somebody else, a painting studio moves in there later, this is still applicable as phrased, or would it not be?
No, would not be applicable.
And I think we actually do need to be less specific than we were there. I'd say rear garage door, period, or rear garage door, which currently faces the CrossFit studio.
For any occupant?
Yeah.
The rear garage door for any occupant.
Would it be possible to add the language about deliveries that you mentioned?
I thought we had, though, hadn't we? Is that not in here?
It's not requiring you to never have access. What it's requiring you to do is restrict access for your clientele. They're coming in and out every day, and that's the reason for the lock. But if you have a delivery, there's no reason to think that we would not agree that you could use that door for deliveries, especially if you're bringing any heavy equipment for the CrossFit gym. So, yeah, I'm still satisfied with how many we have.
Restricting it from public access.
Yeah.
Basically.
Well, we should change it to occupant, though, rather than CrossFit.
I think that's...
Well, you might put in parentheses, current occupant of CrossFit studio, just so we understand that that's the garage door that we're referring to.
I'm not an occupant.
I'm just identifying the door, not the...
I understand everything and all of your rationales, and I appreciate you clarifying, and I can appreciate your justification for all of the things I've identified with you. I suppose before I leave, the one open question I have is with respect to the Section 4 and Section 5 referencing the Hamilton County Engineer, Public Works, Metropolitan Sewer District, that language, I still do submit that that's inapplicable to the property and inapplicable here. I don't believe that we're going to be doing any sort of development work that would require that kind of review.
The only thing about Section 4 is that there was talk of them taking over both spaces. It couldn't quite possibly be construction there.
Well, and I also think we've had an instance with this particular property where we've had a couple of tenants open up without any sort of notification whatsoever. So I think this Section 4 serves a very meaningful purpose, as a reminder that there are certain boxes that need to be checked.
I understand, and for construction, if there is construction, I think that would be appropriate. But I suppose for engineering, I suppose what you're saying is that if there's work or changes done to the property, that we would go through Mr. Ucotta and determine if any sort of approvals would be needed relating to that.
This is Section 5.
Yes.
So the, it does note that unless waived by the zoning administrator, so if, you know, for example, the Hamilton County Engineer, under the current four corners of this case, this resolution, I don't see where the Hamilton County Engineer would be called related to this. It would be, that would be, for example, an area where the zoning administrator would waive that requirement to require a summary report for the Hamilton County Engineer.
And then to the extent to which someone wanted to come in and maybe alter it, then we would need to go through you. Is that your interpretation of it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that through the course of the normal course of business, if a tenant wanted to come in and alter the site, they're going to get their zoning certificates, but then they're going to go, you know, to the wonderful Hamilton County Building Department to, you know, get their building permits, whether it's, you know, maybe there's some structural work to a wall or whatever, you know, that's the normal course of business.
Okay, I understand. Thank you all very much. Is the procedural step, then, that there's going to be a reading of the modified resolution on the agenda?
Well, it looks like we made, how many modifications did we make here? We made one for the dumpster on the east lane.
Right, and then one for the door lock.
And one for the door lock clarification. So it looks like those are the only two.
Those are the only two modifications. So...
Jeff, can you fix that?
Do you want to fix those in the resolution, do a quick print, and then we'll, later on in the normal, normal agenda, we'll, or later in the meeting, let's put it that way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
We'll address that modified resolution.
So as to the landscape plan, we talked about that and where it was historically. I still think the November 30th date needs to apply, but what happens if it does prove impossible at that point?
There are, for example, whether, we're certainly have the posture of wanting to work, you know, with any applicant, I think reasonably, you know, there's two steps, getting the plan done, and then for three steps, scheming the plan done, acquiring the material, and then planting the material. If there's good faith effort, and we're pushing a few days past the November 30th, you know, I'm happy to work, but November 30th is, you know, we're pushing about less than two months away. There's, you know, it's a good chunk of time that I believe it could get accomplished.
I would leave it in there.
I'm fine with leaving that date in there as it is.
Yeah, and it's within your discretion, and you need to grant a bit of time. Is that correct, Katie, or would it need to come back to us?
You can do that administratively, I think.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you all, thank you all.
Thanks, Sophia.
Next individual on our public comments list is Mr. Brian Hague. Mr. Hague, when you make it up to the podium, if you would please state your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Brian Hague. I live at 4106 Judd Drive, and I'm in here regards to a complaint I received from Jeff Ucotta about my property at 4106 Judd. And I just wanted to see what I can do about getting the problem resolved. Both of these complaints, one required, both require me to apply for a permit for something that I did more than a year ago on the fence violation. And it was 2019 when I repaired the shed and connected it with a roof to the property. And I didn't apply for any permits for anything, because I really don't consider them necessary for things that I do to improve or control my own property. Costs are going up for everything in our world today, and I am one that I'm left, I live in by myself in the home. My family has all passed away, and over the years, when they passed away, they left homes full of objects or possessions, and I ended up taking into or onto my property. And the reason for the sheds and the storage on the property is because I've been doing what I can to maintain the property. I need to repair the roof on the small garage that was built in 1948 with the house. And I also have added concrete driveways, concrete porches, and other amenities to the structure, a garage in the backyard that will park four cars, and a driveway with a drainage structure built in. And for me to have to apply for permission to put up a fence, which was basically for my privacy and also to prevent theft of property, I've had some people would come on the back property and steal things. I had some kid that lived over behind the woods behind me steal a bicycle right out of my yard. And so when I had some complaints against the property about a year or so ago, they took pictures of the schoolyard, and the overgrowth was behind my garage. So I went back there and cut all that down, and then put the fence up to keep people from coming in and adding more junk or whatever because of the school property. And they, about a month or so later, eventually cut all the overgrowth down, but if you see the pictures that were sent to me, the overgrowth is back, and the school doesn't trim or, you know, clean up back there. I'm kind of at a loss for what to do, because I've been going back and forth with the township over the years on zoning things, on things I put in my yard or property, and I can't afford fines, violations, or whatever. I can't see where this complaint is valid, because in order to have a cause of action, you have to have a complaint from a... you have to have a complaint from a neighbor or someone who is affected by my property, i.e. making their value of their property worse than what it is, or a violation of some safety or hazard. And I'm not violating anything like that. Yet, I continue to receive complaints from the township that are unsigned. They have no neighbor that's willing to meet me in court to tell me what's wrong with my property. And I just ask for it to stop. Like, you know, I can't afford, you know, $500 or $1,000 fines or whatever they're going to tack on, you know, for, you know, I can't afford that. Okay? Things are costing way more than, you know, and as far as valuation of the property is concerned, Hamilton County did a drive-by estimate on the value of my property at 4106 Judd Drive, and the current value was $148,000. That was a three-year ago assessment. And now the 2023 tentative market value is $201,100, a $53,100 increase. Okay, if Hamilton County thinks that my properties were $53,000 more than it was three years ago, then how can my neighbor say that his property value is going down because of something I'm doing on my property? That's a 35, or almost 36% increase in the value. And that's nothing more than Hamilton County looking for where they can increase revenue. It says, "Oh, no, we're not going to change your property taxes." Yeah, right. The property taxes are based on the value of the property. And if they keep jacking up the property values every year, every three years or so often, I'm not going to be able to afford to live on my property anymore because I can't afford the taxes. Something's got to stop. We've got to quit spending money that we don't have. We've got to quit digging gold mines in people's yards looking for revenue sources. And as far as with other people's property, that if it's run down, or maybe the person can't do anything anymore, maybe they have a heart condition, maybe they have other issues, arthritis, that they can't work on their properties. Can't the township do something with all this supposed funding and that, or get volunteers to help people with their stuff? Maybe cut your neighbor's grass for them when they're sick and can't get out and do it themselves? That's all I got to say. I'm looking to alleviate this problem. I'm willing to even offer volunteer help if somebody wanted to start an organization that would help people, you know, work on their properties and stuff. I worked in the power plant industry all my life, so I have a license to do plumbing and electrical work. And I'd be willing to volunteer help for people if, you know, such an organization was started. But we can't, you know, you can't look at me as a gold mine or a source of income or source of whatever funding they're trying to produce because I don't have any money. I only got what, you know, I get from my pension. And I can't afford, you know, with housing, I can't afford to buy my house now. I couldn't afford to pay $201,000 for the house I'm living in. So, I'm at a loss, at an end of what I can do. And I'm appealing to your good mercies, and something to, you know, like I say, I can't keep, you know, the stress that this puts me in every time I get these letters and photographs, this one here, they got permission to go on my neighbor's yard to take it over a fence. You know? The neighbor didn't complain, but they came in and got permission so they can put a camera over the fence just to see what I'm doing. You know? If I could file a complaint, it'd be the neighbor that cleans his three dogs out in all kind of weather.
Has the township fined you in some way?
What's that?
Has the township fined you in some way?
They're telling me if I don't apply for these permits or permission, then I'll be fined.
Okay, but you have not been fined yet, though, then?
Well, no, no, I'm just, I'm trying to prevent, you know, the township, you know, I got letters here that they sent the occupant under a registered letter.
Have you applied for the appropriate permits as it relates to your fence and the other construction?
The fence has been there for over a year. Why do I need to apply for a permit for it?
And the other construction, you mentioned you built a garage and somehow attached it to the house.
I had a shed that a friend of mine gave me when he moved, and it sat on the back corner of the concrete that I put in for the back patio.
Because I think we just heard from a previous individual who was speaking, there is a zoning code in place, and there are certain thresholds and requirements for anyone that does construction, and it's a safety issue.
Right, and that was done back in 2004 when I brought the shed in. So, what I'm asking is how far can you go back and say, "Well, that's a violation"? Well, the property that I live on, if you go back and look at the original property lines, everything is laid out straight, but the actual property lines go like this. So, if that house was built today, the little garage that came with the property in 1948 is actually a foot and a half from my neighbor's property line.
I think the point of the permits, the building permits are twofold. Number one, it's the zoning code, and it doesn't just apply to you, it applies to every single resident or business in the township, number one. Number two, there is a safety factor as it relates to that. If something were to happen on your property, and say the fire department had to come, they need to make certain that your building, whatever is constructed on that property, is actually constructed in a safe manner.
And it is.
And the current building, we don't know that. Nobody knows that. And so, I think, I think that's part of the reason why there's a standard.
And it gives you the property, the reason to come on the property and make sure that the outside of the property and everything's safe. There's nothing unsafe on my property. I store gas can, gas and approved cans outside of the building.
Let me ask Mr. Eucauter, our zoning administrator, what would be required for him to come into compliance with whatever permits the zoning department has determined he needs? What does he need to do? Is there any cost in doing?
There's a fence that's present that would need just a zoning certificate to be applied for. There is no cost for a residential zoning certificate related to some of the buildings on the property. In review of the aerial imagery over the past couple of years, it appears that perhaps some buildings may have appeared. Doesn't sound like a zoning certificate has been applied for. There's a limit in terms of how many accessory structures could be in the backyard via applied for, and I've heard reference of a building that was there, you know, pre-2000. That's not the building we're looking at. It's buildings that have been placed since the zoning resolution's been placed. There's also...
And these aren't buildings, they're actually plastic sheds that you assemble.
Right. They're structures held down by gravity, and if they're held down by gravity, whether they're, they could be moved, permanent, you know, we would still issue the zoning certificate. And then I think there's the shed on the back of the house that's been basically made into an addition that, you know, doesn't appear to have a...
It's not an addition, I covered the back stairwell because I have a huge oak tree in my yard, and it drops all sorts of crap down in that well, and I got to dig it out every year. Well, this reduces by 90% the amount of stuff that goes down into that well.
I just understand it's attached to the house.
And it's done according to all proper codes, and it had a brand-new roof on it when I did that. And I had a new roof put on the house last year also. So, the whole house has a new roof on it now.
Well, it sounds like as to the fence, you can submit an application for no cost for that and get a certificate for that. For the other items, I don't know.
Well, see, that's the point. If I ask permission for this, and then all of a sudden, no, you can't have that, I've got to tear it down. Or if they say, "We're going to come on your property," or, "You already have done an aerial inspection on my property," so then if I apply for a permit for the shed, "Well, you've got too many, you can't have them." Okay? As I tried to explain to Jeff and some others around here, you know, I've lost three members in my family that own homes. Okay? I've ended up having to take over those homes and the contents of the home. That's why my garage, I can't get a car in that garage because it's full of furniture from those two, two of those homes.
Mr. Hague, you used to have a shipping container in your backyard.
Yes, that was one, and I also had a person that was going to take that shipping container off my hands when I got done with it. I was using it in a temporary basis, okay? And the shipping container was going to actually be converted into a small hospital and shipped to Haiti. A friend of mine had a ministry that he had down Haiti, and he wanted to convert it.
So, where is that now?
The shipping container, I had to give it away because, or had somebody haul it away, and to put it on a property that a guy said he was going to store it for me, and then he stole it from me. So, I don't know where it's at now.
So, you...
But in regards to that instance, I had, when my mother's sister, foster sister, passed away in 1999, the estate was caught up for over two years because the hospital bill hadn't been paid. Well, through work that I had done myself, I found out that they never billed my aunt's insurance for. So, the hospital had filed a $140,000 lien against my aunt's property. All this was putting stress upon my mother. She gave me power of attorney to deal with all her affairs because the stress was killing her.
I get that. I understand.
Okay? The same year that your zoning director forced me to bring my mother downtown because they filed those tickets, brought her out of her home, and made her sign 54 tickets. Okay? And then, because I wasn't allowed to use the power of attorney that she had issued for me to go down to Hamilton County Court, he rejected it out of hand. I wasn't even allowed to show it.
I understand.
Okay? My mother had a quadruple bypass surgery.
Mr. Hague, we have, everyone in the township has to follow the same rules, and they've got to come into compliance. And if you put up a fence and you don't have a permit, that's a problem. If you put up an accessory structure, you could attach it to the house, that's a problem. You can't do, you can't just go do those kind of things without coming and get a permit and have somebody inspect it. My suggestion to you would be, take the list that Mr. Eucauter gave you, and come in, make the application for the fence. We know that's an easy one. I'm sure you probably didn't put the fence on somebody else's property, so it's probably not an issue. Let's try to make an effort to clean some of these things up that are outstanding, which I don't think you're really interested in doing, it sounds like to me.
I don't have an option right at the moment, okay?
I think we just outlined a couple of no-cost options to do.
Right, okay. I applied for two permits, no cost. On the second one, you come and inspect my property and say, "You can't have that shed, you got to get rid of it." What am I going to do with the shed and its contents?
Well, sorry.
If I can't have it on my property?
The township would have to take action later because you didn't get a permit, though the same thing could happen. The law director would go and get a court order, which would say the house has to come down, and ultimately, the township could cause it to come down if that had to happen. We don't want to have to do that.
And I don't want that to happen either. You know, when the township, and Sycamore Township voted on this limited home rule that gave them a zoning department that didn't eliminate Hamilton County's zoning, you've still got to go through them. It just created another buffer layer that you have to go through before you can do something approved on your property.
Well, the township took over its own zoning.
The reason I put a fence back up on the back of my property was, I told you, I was having people come on the property and steal things.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Come on the property and nose around and whatever.
And it's perfectly, it's perfectly okay to have a fence to check property.
Right, and I put it exactly on the fence line.
But there's a process by which, sir, you, just like anyone else in the township, needs to follow in order to have that fence. And that is, that's not a burden on you any greater than it is on anyone else in the township. The rules do apply to everyone, me, and we've had some conversations this evening with several individuals that have been here tonight talking about modifications that they are wanting to make to the property, and it's the zoning code that applies to everyone. So, it would be probably our best recommendation to take some of those steps, no-cost steps, particularly the easy, low-hanging fruit steps, and come in, apply for the fence permit, go through the appropriate process so that we have on record. And then, that way, if someone, if your neighbor does call and complain, we're able to say no. Mr. Hague is in full compliance as it relates to his fence, and that ends the discussion. It doesn't bring you here.
Where's the complaint? There's no person that has issued a complaint against me. I had one neighbor when I lived over on Richmond, she obviously made a complaint, and she said I hit her dog.
The township, for better or for worse, allows people to call in and make anonymous complaints or submit complaints online, and my understanding is someone made an anonymous complaint that way. It wasn't the township going out and claiming to believe your property.
How many of them were there, and when was, how long ago was it?
I couldn't tell you that. Maybe Mr. Eucauter could.
So, related to this...
But you can't, I can't face that person here in court. Anonymous complaint, that's like a Star Chamber.
Well, this isn't a courtroom.
I can't face my accuser.
It's a question of are you complying with the zoning code or not, not does someone contend you're not complying with it. If you've got a fence that didn't have a permit for it before it went up, then it's an unpermitted fence, and there's a free process where you can get a permit for it. But it is unfortunate people can anonymously complain. I know it can be very frustrating if someone does that. But the question then is not who caught it, but is there a violation or not?
I have a question about Sycamore Township's zoning code then. The last time I asked to receive a copy of it, a full copy, printed copy, I was told I couldn't have it because it was private property. It was merely a purchased zoning code, and it's never been adopted into the Ohio Revised Code.
I don't know who told you that, but the township...
Well, it was back when I was dealing with Greg, I believe. I asked him one time, I needed a copy of the zoning code. And he had a book there, it was a zoning code, but he said they couldn't give them out because they didn't own the code, it was something that they had purchased.
There's an international property maintenance code that may be copied in some sense, but it's still available. Mr. Eucauter, I think, can make it available to you to see, or it's available on our website.
I think it's on our website.
Well, I understand, this is before, you know, this is back in the...
The individual I think you're referencing is probably several employees ago, and if that's something that you like, I believe it's available on our website, and if you prefer a printed copy, I'm sure that that's something that the township would be happy to provide to you.
But according to the Ohio Revised Code, it 504.04-2B, said, "No resolution adopted pursuant to this chapter shall create a criminal offense or impose criminal penalties, impose similar fines or other authorized by this chapter. Three, establish or revise subdivision regulations, road construction standards, water and sewage regulations, urban sediment rules or stormwater drainage regulations. And number four, establish or revise building standards, building codes, and any other standard codes except as provided in section of 504-13 of the revised code."
I think, Mr. Hague, if you were to apply for the various structures that are on your property, that that would probably, a lot of that would self-resolve. I don't, you know, it's, some of these are free processes through which, through which you go through, and there's not a penalty associated with it. You just go through the simple free process.
All I know is the letter that you sent me threatens penalties if I violate, and that's, I can't afford...
We're asking you to please come into compliance with our zoning code, just like every other resident and/or business in the township.
I believe I am in compliance. I haven't violated any health ordinances or codes. In fact, I've gotten, because of the woods directly behind my house, I've had a large number of animals try to take up residence around my property. And I've shipped them out, you know, to other places.
If you could apply for the appropriate permits for the various structures on your property, then that should resolve itself. If you're in compliance, then there's nothing to, there's no issue. If you could please comply as everyone else does, that would resolve the issue.
But I know that more than 35% of my properties with, I have a trailer back there, it's actually like a house trailer, a house field, it's got air conditioning, heat, and all that kind of stuff.
If you could please apply for the appropriate permits, I think that would resolve a lot of the items that you probably received a letter relating to.
Is it going to avoid any fines and penalties?
I can't promise you that. I don't know the answer to that because I don't know, I don't know the details of the structure, structures that are being referenced until you actually fill out the appropriate paperwork, and those structures can be evaluated.
Well, the only structure...
If you could do that, that would start the process.
The only structure is, and I, you know, you can come and look and inspect at it or whatever, but it doesn't do anything but cover the rear well.
If you could fill out the appropriate paperwork, that will allow us to evaluate that in the proper fashion through our zoning code.
But you can't promise me that it's not, you're going to come and say, "I got to tear it down."
I can't promise you anything. I haven't seen it. I have nothing to evaluate. If you can provide us the information that will allow us to evaluate it, that would probably allow everyone to get to a far better place.
There's a photograph looking over the fence at it, that's what it is.
If you could please, if you could please comply with the appropriate permit process, that will allow everyone to evaluate it in the appropriate fashion, and hopefully, all, any potential fines would be avoided. That's what the process is there to ensure for you and everyone else in the entire township.
No, I'd encourage you to get together with...
No, I'd encourage you to get together with Jeff and try to figure out how we can resolve the issue so that everyone's happy. You meet the requirements, we're not sending you any more letters, we're not ending up in court. I mean, it's, there's a simple solution to this, and I just think that we've got to cooperate together to make it happen, that's all.
And our zoning department's not here to play gotcha. It's simply to make sure that the fence or anything else complies. So, Mr. Yukater will happily work with you on that, but please make that application. You can arrange for it with him this week.
How recent was the complaint that you received?
It doesn't matter. You're not in compliance. Let's, you're not in compliance. You've got to come into compliance. It doesn't matter who made the complaint, it doesn't matter when they made the complaint, you must come into compliance. We're kicking this ball around, and we're wasting a lot of time. You know you're not in compliance, we told you that by letter, tonight here in front of us, in front of the Board of Trustees, you're not in compliance. Work with us to come into compliance, and then there will not be any more issues. It doesn't matter who made the complaint, it doesn't matter when they made the complaint, it doesn't matter what they complained about, we know that you're not in compliance, you know you're not in compliance based on our rules, let's get it fixed. What's the issue?
We have a country that's based on laws, okay?
Yeah, and you.
I have the right to face my accuser, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
With that, we don't have anybody else signed up for public comment this evening. So, we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Sheriff's Patrol Report.
I don't have anything to make.
All righty, thank you very much. Chief, that moves us on to you.
I'm just going to tell you one thing. We've got a resident that we've made multiple, multiple runs on that lives up on Plainfield Road, and the lady lives, her daughter, about 40 years old, and she has MS. And we've been up there multiple times to help lift her back up. She's in pretty bad shape. So, our medics were talking to the mother, and I think the whole problem is, the bathroom isn't wide enough for a wheelchair to go in, so they have to walk her in there, and she falls all the time. So, two of our medics, two of our full-time guys, volunteered to go to her house and remodel her bathroom, to open up the doorways and to put in the proper safety bars and the safety railings and that that she needs, because the lady that lives there said that her estimate was around $17,000 to get this bathroom redone for handicap-type accessibility. So, they volunteered to do this for her, so they've been working on it for about the past two weeks.
That's awesome.
And as soon as we get, they get done with it, I'll provide you, I'll email you some before-and-after pictures, so you can see.
Who were the two guys?
Brandon Manner and Jason Williams.
Thank them first, wait.
That's great.
Absolutely.
By the way, there are some organizations in the southwest Ohio area that will donate materials for those things and some of the labor as well.
Yeah, I don't know where they're getting the materials from. I think they told her that if she can get the materials, we'll make it work for you. So, I don't know how that came about.
That's excellent.
That's great. Thank you for the good story, Chief. Appreciate it. Thanks for thanking guys for us. A planning and zoning report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Just have a few resolutions. The first resolution relates to case 2023, or 2023-06MA, the Shops at Kenwood case, a resolution approving a major adjustment with conditions to the site plan for an approved planned unit development for the Shops at Kenwood, 7700 to 7724 Montgomery Road, and dispensing with a second reading. I would note that this would include the two modified conditions that was discussed earlier in the meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
Very quickly, I have two public nuisance cases. The first one is 8344 Kenwood Road, type violation, junk trash and rubbish. The complaint initiated was of Mr. Bob Hurd, date of complaint, July 24th, 2023. It's owner occupied, the date of violation letter was August 15th, 2023, date of last inspection was the 2nd of October. The owner has been responsive. Mr., the inspector notes that the owner said he would have it cleaned up, but has not removed the items next to the shed. We just have some items here with, especially with the tires next to the shed. With that, a resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris, and declaring a nuisance for the property located at 8344 Kenwood Road, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45236.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
One other public nuisance case, 8513 Needlewood Court, type violation, tall grass, weeds, overgrown bushes, brush, garbage cans, garbage. The complaint initiated was anonymous, date of complaint was the 13th of August. The occupancy is unknown, the date of violation is the, again, August 13th, 2023, date of last inspection was the 2nd of October. The owner's been unresponsive. Mr. Clark notes that there's been no contact with the owner, unfortunately. I've seen with this site, seen its better days, there's a lot of trash, and it could be cleaned up. With that, a resolution providing for and authorizing removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris, declaring nuisance for the property located at 8513 Needlewood Court, Sycamore Township, Ohio 45236.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Roads Maintenance and Recreation Report. You're up.
He's ready.
So, we'll start with Parks and Rec Report. Kenwood Gardens, a very popular place for residents. The Parks Department has been busy doing maintenance on the existing plant beds, by removing some old plants, pruning, and putting a lot of new species in there. We've also installed new picnic tables and a concrete pad. Work will continue with the planting beds through next spring. Just wanted to point out again, like, how popular the Kenwood Gardens is becoming with its proximity to Greater Sycamore, Tracy.
Yes, it is.
Since noon.
Roads Report. We didn't have much of an update last meeting regarding the township's 2023 Cape Seal Road program, so I wanted to update you guys on that. I sent a letter to Strouzer Construction on September 20th stating that we are not accepting the project at this time, and to request a meeting to discuss our concerns. We met with Strouzer Construction last week. The summary of the meeting is that they are going to hire a third party, the National Center for Pavement Preservation, to assess the project. I expect their response in a few weeks. Sycamore Township is meeting with ODOT District 8, Lab Engineer, Construction Auditor, and the Warranty Coordinator next week to evaluate the project and to have a discussion on the ODOT specifications for the project. I'm expecting to have further dialogue with Strouzer regarding the project in the coming weeks. Want to reiterate, the township has not accepted this project yet, and has not paid a dime. Update on the SORTA grant applications that we submitted a couple months ago. Some of you may have seen the article in the Enquirer today, so wanted to give an update on that. The Finley Lane Sidewalk Project, SORTA's approved Sycamore Township's grant application covering 90% of the project cost. The township will receive approximately $236,000. The project will include construction of a sidewalk on the north side of Finley from approximately the Indian Hill Township Corp line to Montgomery Road. We also received sort of a, sort of a, sort of a grant for the improvements.
Sort of a, sort of a grant. Easy for you to say, Steve.
Exactly. For the Kenwood Road improvements, this grant will cover 90% of the project cost. The township will receive approximately $4.2 million. The project limits are from Montgomery Road to Galberth Road, will include curb replacement, sidewalk, decorative sidewalk replacement, new curb ramps, resurfacing of the road, decorative pavement markings, and illuminated street signs at Orchard Lane. The limits from Galberth Road to the city of Blue Ash Corp line include spot curb repair, resurfacing of pavement, and new pavement markings. So, that was exciting news that we received.
That's great news. It's a big project. That is great news.
Will the county be chipping in anything for that? I'm curious, besides SORTA. I mean, Kenwood's a county road, we obviously want it improved, so.
What do you mean by shipping in?
Chipping in.
Oh, chipping in, yeah.
Money.
Yeah.
That would probably be a no.
That would be a no.
Yeah. Tracy and I were going to reach out to the county engineer and gauge your interest in participating.
Ninety, oh, ninety percent from SORTA is a big number. Just great. So, that's, that is an enormous, enormous win, so congratulations.
And our portion will be coming through TIF, generated by the Town Center and the Kenwood Development, so it will not be coming out of general fund or our taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah, you know, a very heavily crowded section of roadway. I believe it's over, well over 20,000 vehicles and travers, Kenwood Road. The Maintenance Department update has completed 23, year 23 sidewalk repairs in the southern section of the township, and has now started working up in the northern section of township. That should be finishing up here shortly. We are also finishing up the 23 cracked ceiling of streets, which includes the Schuler Park Lawson Path. Couple quick announcements. The curbside leaf pickup will begin on October 16th, and yes, I have received calls already. We will move that date up.
But the trees are still kind of green.
Yeah.
It'll all come at once, like it did a couple years ago.
We're going to get that cold snap this weekend, it's going to.
And the monthly brush collection is Saturday, October 14th, at the Township Administration Building, and I believe Tracy will cover that in her announcements as well. One resolution is the resolution for the board to consider authorizing the trade-in of an existing brush bandit Model 100 and dispensing with a second reading. As you know, this, the board approved Mr. Callums to purchase a new brush bandit. We were entertaining thoughts whether to auction this off or trade it in, and realized that we could get more value by trading it in.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
And that's it for the tongue-twisting today.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Okay. Let's see. Comments to your, the Kenwood traffic study, we had our public hearing on that back in March, there was public comment opened through the end of June, I think, from that, from TEC. Have we heard anything further from TEC after that initial draft report and the public comment period?
I've been receiving, it's probably been two or three weeks since I've received any additional public comments, and as I receive them, or if staff receives them, we send them over to TEC. I have not heard an update yet. I can follow up with TEC, though.
Okay, I'm just curious to know what their timetable is for that. I stopped by the old Taco Bell the other day. I wasn't able to get my order filled, since we tore it down, of course, but could you have our guys go look at the site over there? Because the pad it used to be on, the tile is still there, but there's a lot of rubble and broken glass and dangerous stuff, so we probably ought to go sweep that.
Clean it up, yeah.
Yeah, if we're a private property owner, we can get after them for that, so let's clean that up. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think that's all I had for you, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the Law Director Report.
Nothing from the Law Director's office this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that report.
Deliver it with such guts, David.
Okay, that brings us to you, Mr. Callums, the Administrator Report.
Just a quick couple things, continuing to work with the county Sheriff's Department with the Flock cameras. As you know, we agreed to put up eight cameras, not to put up, but to use our existing infrastructure. There has been some comment back from Flock that they weren't happy with the ability of the cameras to get nighttime vision. You know, we gave them samples of all these cameras before we ever went to this agreement, so we are still in the process of working this out. Wanted you to know that we haven't stopped there. Also been working on property insurance quotes. I thought we'd have them back by now. They contacted us last week and said that they are being held up from their underwriters, so we do not have a price there yet either. And medical insurance, waiting for a quote there. We've had one meeting with them, and I know Beth has gone back and forth with them on some questions that we had. Also still waiting for a price. We will be interested in seeing what that price is, because we have ended up having four months of moratorium, if you remember correctly. If we got over a certain amount in our surplus, that we got a moratorium and didn't have to pay for a month, and we've had four of those since we've done it, so I can't imagine why the price would not go down. Yeah, because if you remember, a couple years ago, we had a million-dollar deficit, and right now, including the four months of moratorium, we're sitting on probably a $400,000 surplus. So, it's been huge changes. Other than that, I just have purchase orders over $5,000 for your consideration, PO number 23-69-4, which is a blanket vendor, and the amount of $5,791.44 for fire contract services. 23-152 for the Indian Hills Exempted Village, and the amount of $3,172,539.80. This is for the second-half school payments for 2023. 23-153 to the Great Oaks Career Campuses, $187,095.57, also for the second half of 23 school payments. 23-154 for the Princeton City School District, $248,313.24 for their second-half payment. 23-155 for Sycamore Board of Education, $93,719.91 for their second-half payment. 23-156 for the Deer Park Community City Schools, $560,866.56 for the second-half school payment for them in 2023. Then 23-157 Huntington National Bank, $30,433.88. This is for first-half payment of the 2023 tax gallery at the Kenwood Balance. This is a pass-through to the Port Authority. 23-158 U.S. National Bank Association, $758,183.97. This is a balance of Fund 43, also a pass-through to the Port Authority. 23-159 Huntington National Bank, $13,841. This is a balance of Fund 55, also a pass-through to the Port Authority.
Motion to approve previously aforementioned purchase orders, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That's all I had, man.
I've got a few questions also here, but. Tracy, do you know what I'm holding in my hand here?
I don't think I do.
This is a piece of that decorative mat outside our front door that is falling apart, and this is sitting on the sidewalk in front of it, is a tripping hazard. I think I've mentioned that before, but that thing's looking pretty nasty now, and pieces are coming out. I'll let you have this one, I don't really need it, but can we replace that?
Well, I will talk to you about that. Ironically, Mr. Gould and I had a conversation last week about that mat, and he is going to look at getting something replaced similar, if we can get the logo on it and stuff, but ironically, yes, we did mention that last week. week.
Awesome. All right.
You know, you bring new eyes and they, they see stuff--
Yeah, exactly.
Very quickly.
I've noticed it looking ratty for a while, but I hadn't seen pieces around it until today. And I figured I better pick it up and say something. So, so thank you. And I'll just ask Mr. Callens again. The Finance Committee, where are we on applicants for the Finance Committee? We approved July of last year.
So as you know, we've gone through a lot of changes. I've given all the resumes to Mr. Deeters, who we also gave to Ms. Woodke, who was working on that. As you know, through my email to you today, Ms. Woodke has resigned. So I will defer to Mr. Deeters, who is the Chair of that committee, as to where we are with that.
Yeah, unfortunately, Mrs. Woodke was to run point on that. Unfortunately, she resigned on Sunday evening about 10:30 PM. So I'll talk to Debbie about it. Obviously, we hope to get a new replacement ASAP. That'll be one of their job duties as well as with Debbie in the remaining time that she has with us. So we were working on it. Unfortunately, things happen.
Unfortunate resignation. Yeah. Will you share the resumes with the board that you have currently?
Sure.
Got them last year, I think, but I don't know where we are now. Thank you. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to Fiscal Officer Report.
Yes, the township had cash receipts of $132,244.06, disbursements of $5,547,769.70. A complete listing of the receipts and disbursements is available in the packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deeters.
Mr. James.
Aye.
Ms. Swagman.
Aye.
Mr. Weedman.
Aye.
That takes us to Trustee Comments.
I have none. I'm speechless.
That's two meetings in a row.
I know.
Oh, my.
I'm letting nature take its course.
Just a couple things. Yesterday evening, I was able to take a tour behind the scenes of the Hamilton County Board of Elections. And it was fascinating just to see the processes they have and how secure our voting process truly is here in Hamilton County with what they do. It's a nice educational process to see what they're gearing up for. They're about to become what might be the largest county agency in the coming months because at election time, they have their employment ranks swell because they need a whole bunch of people to do stuff. So briefly, they may be the largest county government employer in the county. But it's great to see what they do. The other thing is, if anyone's still listening to this late and you haven't heard, tomorrow at 2:20 PM is a nationwide emergency alert test. And everybody's cell phone is supposed to go off at 2:20 PM Eastern to tell you there's a non-alert, basically. But it'll be a test. TV and radio will do that as well. So don't panic if everybody's phone goes off, if there's nothing incoming. So anyway, thank you.
All right. And with that, I'm going to simply read from this agenda, even though we've already heard this once this evening, from, from our, from our, our team here. Monthly brush chipping is slated for Saturday, October 14th, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, behind the Township Administration Building, right here at 8540 Kenwood Road. And that ever-popular curbside leaf collection begins for residents on Monday, October 16th, 2023. I will make one other comment. I believe we sent identification even out through social media channels as it relates to the Township Halloween timing. I know that there was some conversation in the city of Cincinnati to potentially move that to a Saturday or something like that. We here in the township will stick with October 31st, traditional Halloween date, starting at 6:00 PM. So mark your calendars for all the little chippers readers on Halloween proper. For all other scheduled meeting in advance, please see the published calendar available on our website. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:40 PM.